Good evening and welcome to the School District of the City of Dearborn, regular scheduled meeting. Today is Monday, August 19th, 2024. It is 7:00 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Patrick D'Ambarozio, here. Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Adele Mosse.
Here.
Mary Petrikoff.
Here.
Jim Thorpe.
Is excused.
Irene Watts.
Is excused.
President Barry.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Superintendent, update.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here this August as we prepare for the first day of school, August 26th. I will start with retirements and then I'll go into some things that have been going on in preparation. The first thing I want to do, we always congratulate and thank our retirees. So we have Kevin Gahman, over 12 years. Nada Debajja, 41 years. Greg Oak, over 10 years. Lynn Hoover, 28 years. Barbara Corpi, over 19 years. Diane Mickchnuck, 30 years of service. Let's show our appreciation and congratulate them. So I'll just go down the list.
Please.
So, as I mentioned, the first day of school, we're very, very excited. It's actually my second favorite day of the year. My first, my favorite is the graduation days. Second favorite, first day of school. But they're close. So it's always exciting to see the new, the new students coming in and everyone excited and a little nerve, nerve wracking. But rest assured, Dearborn Schools has been well under preparations for the return of students. Our building administrators returned last week and our teachers are returning on Wednesday. We have all our teacher welcome backs that I'll be part of. And we have a lot of professional development planning. Planning has occurred much earlier than that. And I know the board is aware that I've had multiple retreats and preparations for the year and they've been very, very effective. And so we're ready to roll, ready for next week and very, very excited. So I want to welcome all the students and the families back. And we will once again do our building visits, you know, the first day. And then I make sure I get to every building over the, I do my best to get there within about two weeks, sometimes sooner. It just depends on, you know, trying to spend quality time in the buildings as well. So grants, again, our team, I'm very proud of our team. Honestly, our team is really thriving. Our administrators are working very hard in collaboration with all our staff, but specifically on grants, the administrators take the lead. And we have another grant in the area of math, $3.7 million. Ms. Farage took the lead and her team. I know we have that new grant, right, Ms. Lauren, who's been doing a great job helping to support and facilitate. So that's some other good news. I also want to mention the, I have a few others that I didn't have on at the time. But we have the task force on acceleration for middle and high school, President Barry, that you've been really following. And implementation rollout starts on August 22nd with the staff. So Ms. Farage and, you know, all the administrators are taking the lead, but that's moving forward. I also want to mention that we had a very, very positive meeting last week. It's forming a group with the Dearborn Schools called the Interfaith Committee, representing different religious organizations in the community. We plan to have meetings on a regular basis and actually rotate the locations. So there's already one scheduled for the end of October. So we had a very positive meeting to start, to start out. And I know some of you attended. We weren't sure about weather. Weather was sketchy, then it rained, then it stopped. I had my umbrella, I'm glad, but we made it to the PTA picnic. It was jam packed. President Alfali and the entire council and all the volunteers did a wonderful, wonderful job. So I think that was very positive. Want to mention a few things. We have, because we have professional development, we need parking and so our neighbors are helping us out. Near Etzel Ford specifically for some of the professional development on the 21st and 22nd. Jay Macklin with the UAW, Local 600. Daryl Schumberger, UAW, Local 245. We have the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and the Imam Mardini from Temple One Center, all providing parking for us as neighbors. And we always provide support for them when those issues come up. The last thing I have, and I'll just mention something for me on a personal note. Today, and I'm not there, but today my wife reaches one of those milestone birthdays. I won't say what it is, but I reached that milestone last year, so I didn't officially say. But we are planning something on the weekend with her family. So happy birthday to my wife. She's a wonderful mother and, and wife, so.
Happy birthday to her.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Dr. Maleko, you and I discussed something the last couple of days. At this Michigan State School Board of Education meeting, under their budget, there was a million dollar budgeted for personal hygiene items to be placed in bathrooms throughout the state and different districts. And one of the trustees asked a question. Are these items going to make it to the boys bathrooms? And the answer came from the finance director saying it won't be mandatory. It'll be up to the individual districts. And I know you wanted to make a statement on that.
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate it, President Barry. So two years ago, we did receive a grant for feminine hygiene products. Our nurses took the lead on. And so where we have them, we have them in the girls bathroom. We have them in what we call the unisex bathroom that are, you know, single bathrooms and they're available in the office. We will not be placing them in the boys bathrooms. We're not required to. I've also had a conversation with our council and we, where there's no law requiring that. So that is our plan.
Thank you.
Moving forward.
Thank you. Some of our parents were in attendance in that meeting, virtually or in person. And, you know, obviously that came up and I said, you know, I'll talk to my superintendent and we'll go from there. So thank you for making that statement. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements. Accommodations.
Good evening, Trustee Barry, Superintendent, Ms. Harris, trustees. Just a few commendations. Always a pleasure to get up here and read these. First, commendations to Brian Kelly, Andy Ageas, Chris Shamentay, Anthony Gouch, and Jeff Graham, and Joe Kelly, and Mike Rodriguez. All of these employees went that extra mile for us to get supplies delivered to buildings for the start of the summer discovery program, which you're going to hear a lot more about shortly. Commendations to Lauren Embarico, who completed the Michigan School Business Officials 11-month Business Manager Academy. Ms. Embarico is Director of Grants and Special Projects. And commendations to Nada Almadine, who renewed her Human Resource Specialist Certification with the Michigan School Business Officials. The voluntary program requires a minimum commitment of 90 professional development hours. Her renewed certification is valid through June 2029. And Ms. Almadine currently serves as Human Resource Director for our non-instructional staff. Those are the few commendations that we have this evening from our office.
Thank you, sir.
Trustee Barry.
Turn it down.
I believe, and I'm not sure, but I believe you missed one name on the first accommodations for the school supplies. Tracy Eckers was up on the board, but I don't think that you said it. So I just wanted to make that acknowledgement, too.
Thank you for catching. Anybody else? Thank you. Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening. A donation of $173.34 has been offered to Whitmore Bowl School by Ms. Anne Michellis to be used to purchase notebooks, crayons, colored pencils, and markers for kindergarten students. A donation of 15,200 children's books has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Marine Toys for Tots Foundation Literacy Program to assist children directly or to help teachers with reading materials in their classrooms or their school libraries. That's all.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, regular P-12 meeting, July 29th, 2024, Board Report 24-18. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move for approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
You have a motion moved by Trustee Mosse, supported by Trustee Petrikoff. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Thank you. Next item, please.
Union leadership commentary. The new section of the Board of Education meeting is being added to further enhance the already strong commitment and longtime partnership between district and administration. And all bargaining units, both instructional and non-instructional union members, serve on a wide variety of standing and AD hoc committees that drive work and decisions making in the Dearborn Public Schools. In addition, administration meets monthly with a leadership team of all unions as well as a group meeting with collective partnerships that has long existed in the Dearborn Public Schools. This new section will further enhance the commitment to valuing all suggestion, views, and opinions brought forth by all staff members in the district. A. Association of Dearborn Schools Administration, ADSA, none. Dearborn Federation of School Employees, DFSE, none. Dearborn Federation of Teachers, DFT, none. Dearborn School Operating Engineers Association, DSOEA, none.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Special reports. Summary Discovery Program 2024. Ms. Mason Aliwazi, Ms. Lamise Sauer.
Can I make a comment, Mr. President, before we get started? Just want to say this is another area of where, and I know you've said it, President and other trustees, we're Dearborn leads. We talked about it last month, but our team, again, looking for funding to support our students. We know it's very important, the summer programs. And again, one of the larger summer programs, and I think believe in the state, and finding that money from the Ballmer was great. So I don't want to steal their thunder, but I want to compliment the team again and all the teachers and all the staff and everyone who worked hard to put this together.
Thank you. Super exciting summer. We applied for a grant and we received a grant from the Ballmer Group for 7.2 million, so $2,000 per student for 25, for a 25-day program. We had 3,600 students register and it was free for all students. The eligibility criteria is 50% of the building has to be free or reduced lunch. So we were, students have to be eligible for free or reduced lunch. So we were able to offer it to all our students in all our buildings. And depending on enrollment, we did combine buildings. So we actually had 16 buildings that had the program going on, but it represented all of our K-8 schools grades. It was K-8. Eight-hour minimum per day was required. That could include childcare time as well. And there had to be 90 minutes of English language learning literacy and math, 90 minutes of each, and it had to be provided by certified teachers. Transportation and meals were required as well. And so we provided transportation and we provided breakfast and lunch to all the students that attended. It had to include a ton of enrichment activities. So this was supposed to be designed and was designed different than the regular school year because it was so, the kids were so, there were so many different enrichment activities embedded in the program. 25 to 1 student-teacher ratio. This year, we did schedule 20 to 1 as our first year, but the grant allows up to 25 students per teacher. We had family engagement activities, about two per building. So those were touchpoints for the family, where you invite the family over to do reading activities with the students or a variety of activities. Walk through the halls and see what the students have created during their time at the summer program. There was pre and post-assessments. It was only 10 questions, which was a relief because my first question was like, do we really need more assessments in the summer? But we do because it's, it's funding and they want to be able to track the progress of the students. But it was only 10 questions. There was also post-surveys that included the families, the site leader, so the building principal, and then also a district level, which I completed that survey. We had three site visits as well. And that was just a different building and we went with one of our representatives that was our point person for the entire program. And then, of course, we had attendance incentives, which were a lot of fun. Lamise over here handled the attendance incentives and shout out to Anne Kazara as well. She did a lot of coordinating. As always, when you have any type of new program, you have a ton of learning that takes place in the first year. And we'll be getting the survey results back and using that to drive next year's program. Our hope is that we can apply again and get the approval for the funding much, much sooner in the school year, so we can let our families know and of course, let our staff know. We did have staff from other districts asking if they could work, which is always a compliment, but we did have enough staff. We were able to place all of our, the majority of our eight K-8 teachers that applied, majority of them, not all of them. It was about 230 teachers. Okay, Lamise is going to talk about the enrichment activities.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see everybody. Our goal, and Ballmer Group's goal, was to provide enrichment activities that would attract students to want to come back every day. And so we hope we did that. And the one way to get kids to come is to give them choice. So that was really the goal. It made things a little tedious and time-consuming, but it really is what brings the kids back every day. So we wanted to provide art, PE, technology, science, and there's lots of pictures to show what the kids did. And every building was able to choose what they wanted for their enrichment and even by grade level, go that step to say for K or 5 or 3rd grade, this is what my kids want. So it was really focused for every, for what every building wanted. Here are some pictures.
I wanted to show, this, this is the mural they did at the Stout Middle School. So when you go to Stout now, this mural is actually on the wall. Nutty Scientist was a huge hit. Also, shout out to Chris Mazural, who worked closely with Lamise and I throughout the entire program. Nutty Scientist is an interactive science activity. And I swear, the kids were talking about it in every building I went to and the teachers were talking about it. So that was a win. We got a ton of great feedback, many several different STEAM activities. You'll see here, highly interactive, kids interacting with other kids for problem-solving purposes that were hands-on. See that here.
And attendance incentives, our goal also, and this was something that parents and staff also appreciated, was we wanted to steer away from technology, toys, and things that had the kids just sit and get. We wanted things interactive, things that got them outside. And so once every student reached an attendance goal, they were able to shop in the, in the school store and choose whatever they wanted. So we had a variety of options for them, from board games to journals to art supplies. And then Mason actually, for one week, was able to get Kona Ice to come to every building as their attendance treat. Who's that?
Those are both of my kids in that picture.
Specials classes was also choice-driven. So staff was able to choose from PE, music, gardening, STEAM, art, media, math, game sessions, lots of pictures. And you can see the smiles on their faces. They really enjoyed it. Yep.
Another mural.
This bigger mural, it's more bowls, I believe. Henry Ford has some nice murals inside their building.
Cardio drumming. Dan Taylor, he, he got more workouts than he had bargained for doing cardio drumming and the other music teachers that were doing cardio drumming as well. And we had Liz Myers at Maples as well, doing the drumming and a few other teachers doing the cardio drumming. But Dan Taylor got a workout, multiple workouts per day.
We also partnered with SFIT to provide cooking classes for the students, healthy cooking recipes. And the kids were able to make salads and healthy treats for themselves. Part of the Nutty Scientist curriculum was an assembly. So Nutty Scientist came to every building and held an assembly for the students. In some buildings, it was K-2, 3, 5, and others, it was 3, 5. And you can see here, the kids really enjoyed it. That's Gear Park.
Lunch at Salina and the site.
And that's Mr. Ballmer himself, right there at Salina. In this picture, Mr. Ballmer is with his staff, our staff, Salina staff, Salina students. And it was a great conversation and he wanted to hear from everybody there. The testimonials were very powerful. The teachers, some of them said, this is what school should be like every day because the kids were really, and they got to really know the students outside of the normal day-to-day setting. So they, but they were able to build relationships with them. And the way we tried to assign teachers to students was to assign their incoming students to them so they can get a head start on building those relationships and knowing their students. So everything was really intentional.
Can I mention from that, well, Mr. Ballmer, I remember he asked the students and they said, what did they like about this? It's a lot of fun and we do a lot of projects.
Yes.
Projects. They love the projects, so.
And the teachers want to do that, too.
Yes.
Everybody enjoyed it.
We were super excited to get selected as a site visit by Mr. Steve Ballmer because it was like 45 minutes and you had to stay on schedule. And so we wanted him to see as much as possible. And so shout out to the Salina team that was there. And, and he was interacting with everyone like, you know, in such a positive manner. And if you look at what he does, he's in Washington State, Southeast Detroit, and Los Angeles is where he does all the philanthropy work. And so getting selected, we were really excited about that. I never, now I know who Steve Ballmer is.
Some of the teachers came around, wanted to talk to him and we talked on the side and he was like, he's the owner of the LA Clippers. But he's, and we said, well, who do you like to, he goes, don't worry, I grew up as a Pistons fan, so.
Questions?
So this was a one-time grant and we have to reapply next year. Do you think we're going to have more competition now that he's been to the state and has, and are we going to have to up our game in any way?
No, we are actually helping recruit in the, from the tri-county area because they were disappointed that Detroit, Detroit also did it. So it was us in Detroit, but they asked, hey, can you help us get more districts for next year? And so Dr. Maleko and myself, throughout our different organizations that we work with, we plan on helping them recruit, but I don't think it'll negatively impact us. Their goal was to serve 20,000 students this summer and I don't believe they met that for southeastern Michigan. So, and they were learning with us. So it was, it was really, really good.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Great program.
Next item, please.
Citizens' participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items for Action who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Board Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on comments made to the Board. Agenda items for action, none. Non-agenda items for action, none. And Board follow-up.
I don't think we have anything to follow up on. We addressed everything. Great. Thank you very much. The next item, please.
Action items. Special consideration of an action item. Secretary comments. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which Board members or, or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
We do have a supplement at the table?
And I just have a real quick question. It doesn't need to be told.
Okay, we'll get to it. Okay, continue, please.
Motion to approve action items. Background instruction. At this time, the Secretary will call for a single motion to approve all the action items on this agenda with the exception of any items which have just been excluded from this motion by the Board member request. Recommended action, move that action items number one be approved as recommended in the agenda and, what was that, 22?
So it's action items.
22 to be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion moved by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Petrikoff. Are there any, there is a question.
Just a real quick question. We are purchasing two vehicles for security purposes. Will these vehicles be well-signed so that people know what they're for and with district logoing or, or lights or something?
They will have both. So.
So they'll look like a security.
They'll be labeled as Dearborn Schools vehicles and they will have a light option on them. So right now in the Operations Department, even our Buildings and Trades Vehicles, they have those light options on them, too, and they're labeled Dearborn Schools. So they'll go along with the same thing.
Okay. I just was curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Are there any objections to the motion on table? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Dr. Maleko, did you want to address 22?
He's not here.
Oh, okay.
So he'll come back. He was out of town.
All right, great. Next item, please.
If you're going to do something.
Yep. At this time, the Secretary will read a summary of the action items that were just approved. Approval of warrants. Approval of blanket purchase orders per Board Report 24-20. Approval of an award to Payroll Sport LLC. An approval of an award to PAES per Board Report 24-21. Approval of an award to Image Learning per Board Report 24-22. An approval of an award to Just Write Reader per Board 24-23. Approval of an award to Edge Newity. Approval of the Assistance Program Resolution per Board 24-24. Approval of an award to Ford, I'm sorry, Motor City Electric Company. 10 and 11 are approval of change orders. 12 is an approval of an award to Purvis and Foster Incorporated per Board Report 24-25. 13 is approval of an award to Mission Ford. 14 is an approval of an award to Superior Ground Cover per Board Report 24-26. 15 through 18 is an approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. 19 is approval of financial statement. 20, approval of summer graduates per Board Report 24-32. 21, approval of donations. And 22 is the appointment of Assistant Principal at Nicola Unis K-8.
Great. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Okay.
Take your time.
Oh.
Page 16.
Discussion item, 30, 30-minute time limit, none.
Next item, please.
Board of Education Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
Dr. Maleko?
I still have one. I had a really positive letter that came and I think Mr. Musson received it as well, or gave a copy. We have the donations that are given. It's a partnership with the DFT and with the school district. And I know David does a great job every year getting that during the homecoming. And so the parent was just thrilled, sent me a letter thanking for providing this and just thought it was a real positive thing, you know, a two-page letter. And she was just very thrilled. So I wanted to mention that. And thanks for the ongoing collaboration for David's leadership and everyone who volunteered and participated. And Kathy Martin, we know, with the DFT and others. So just wanted to mention that.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Don't believe we had any. Next item, please.
Board Members/Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee McDonald?
I just want to congratulate all our summer graduates and wish them all the best and a wonderful future.
Great. Okay. I have something on behalf of Trustee Thorpe regarding the passing of Mr. Bob Bridges. This is a statement he sent me. I'm reading on his behalf. This is a statement he sent me, I'm reading on his behalf. "I was lucky to have an opportunity to run track for Mr. Bridges. He approached me after baseball tryouts my freshman year and encouraged me to join the track team. For four years, for four years, I was able to interact and learn from him, which continued to adulthood as I helped at the Alex Relays and other track events, and would see him at football games until recently. He had an impact on three generations of pioneers and will be missed. Thanks, Jim." Let's have a moment of silence for Mr. Bridges, please. Thank you. I believe, Trustee Pachikoff?
Well, I just wanted to attest to Superintendent Maleko about, I went swung by the PTA picnic, and I will tell you, it was very well-attended there, and they had a lot of excited-looking students, and pre-students who, who are going to get a good experience from being there with their older siblings and seeing what the kickoff to the school year would look like. I was also at homecoming and ran up to go to the book booth as well, and that seemed to be a very exciting time for the students. My granddaughter actually got a book from there as well. So that's always something that is appreciated amongst the community members, and it's a goodwill to give, to give to our youngest citizens of the city.
It's awesome. Was, was Jim there?
At the PTA? I'm not sure, I didn't see him at the time. I think we missed each other.
Yeah, we missed each other, and I think he's been out of town since Friday.
You went the better time, because it didn't rain. It rained when I got there, so.
Question is, who's flipping the burgers?
Ah, there was.
He's eating those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I, I went there and I circled the entire, and, and I was the only, only one there at that moment.
The only benefit was, because of the rain, it cooled down a little, so it wasn't like the normal hot and tough.
Yeah, it was not.
That's good. Thank you to PTA, and thank you to President Abiel.
Yeah.
A great event. Next item, please.
I just had one thing.
Yes, sir.
I forgot to mention in my commentary with the interfaith meeting, I wanted to mention, I had it written down, but Lamise Sewer, Dr. Violet Swedan, and Lila Amen were instrumental in getting that group together, so appreciate their leadership there.
Thank you. Trustee Mosip?
Yes, I ran into a McCullough-UNIS teacher, elementary teacher, so at McCullough, who recently published a book, and the book is called, what can our hands do?
Oh, yeah.
Amazing book in three languages, English, Arabic, and Spanish. So it's also available on Amazon, and I promised her to give her a shout-out at the board meeting. I actually purchased two, one for my ten-year-old and one, if anyone wants the book. I also want to caution our parents, I, obviously, a school new year, new school year, and driving has been hectic this summer, so I hope that we have a safe and happy opening to the new school year with no, with less accidents in Dearborn.
I will say that I, I was asked by Chief Shaheen to attend my next DFNA meeting, and I suspect that is going to be the topic of conversation, so if there's anybody who would like to either attend the DFNA meeting, I will put it out there for you, and/or if you have anything you would like me to share with him, Corporal Bartok and the chief will be there, and I know this has been a troubling topic in the city of late, and we want to make sure that we are there to help support parents with their students and to support the city with their ability to manage the safety of all of our community members.
Sure, sure, sure. This was a very sad summer, all the accidents, loss of life, young people, and, you know, I, I know ticketing has been an all-time high, so that's one way to, to change behavior, but this is not just a Dearborn thing. This is nationwide, what I've been reading, so it's sad that these young people are getting behind these killing machines, and this is all.
And treating it as a game rather than a responsibility.
Tell the chief that, you know, he has our support.
Right.
We don't know what the answers are, you know, we don't.
We haven't found it yet.
Is it, is it the parents at home, they can help? I mean, I know they're the police department, the finest in Dearborn, they're doing a great job. Other than that, we'll just keep praying for better days. Next item, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Anybody?
I know, request for information, as, as far as the acceleration plan that we have, if we can have, when do you expect, Dr. Maleko, that we can have the next update as a presentation, perhaps to the Board?
Okay.
That would set the tone high for the new school year.
I'll speak to Ms. Faraj, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, cool, thank you.
You know what, I'm going to go on the record, I know we spoke about it earlier, Dr. Maleko, but regarding enrollment, hopefully by the next meeting, we have some data, hopefully it's up. I also want to look at the fifty-five students that we mentioned last spring, if any of them returned to our district, which would be great news, and let's keep an eye on ninth graders, incoming ninth graders that are not enrolling in our, in our school system for this year, please. Trustee McDonald, you got follow-up?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I was thinking, too, and it's been a while since I've seen that chart, but we did have charts that followed our student count and projected student count all the way through all the grades, and I haven't seen it in a long time, and I'd kind of like to see where we were, and if we, you know, if things have.
From one of the, our, the companies, we get the projections usually?
No, it was, I believe it was in-house produced, but it had each grade and the number of students in each.
So it's just a breakdown?
Yeah, it was a breakdown.
Just a breakdown of the numbers.
It was basically.
Was it more the capacity?
It was like capacity, but it had actual numbers. It wasn't capacity, it had, because you could see where there was like bubbles. I remember there was one, I think, in, the last one I remember looking at, I think there was a bubble in like third grade or something, and you could see where these bubbles were going to travel, and so prepare for more.
I think that's something Mr. Masur probably put together.
Perhaps, and I don't remember what it was called, but does anybody else remember?
Yeah, I know, I know what you're referring to.
I know what you're talking about, yeah. It was just a breakdown of the numbers.
Yeah, right.
Grade, yeah.
And if we have some from previous to see, you know, if they've maintained.
Comparisons, yeah.
And some comparisons, I'd just kind of like to take a look at that.
Trustee Pachikoff? Yeah, you know, we are getting ready to move more classrooms and students over to our new campus at Henry Ford College, and if the Michael Berry Career Center is having some alleviation with adult ed moving out, can we have a conversation about how we are going to be reutilizing that space, and if there's any other anticipated changes of movement of programs that could benefit from going to the additional?
And one thing we've done over there in our executive cabinet retreat, we always review job responsibilities with the executive cabinet, so Mr. Martin used to oversee that with his responsibilities in the college, we're now having Ms. Faraj will be supervising Ms. Alcadre, and she is now in charge of that entire campus, and I know the Board's aware from board briefs, but, so there has been some structural changes there because of those things, and it's for optimization as well, so.
Well, I think because most of the community probably are not as aware of these shifts in, in, in the programming because of the new building usage, it, it might be a nice short summary of what's happening there and what they can be looking at.
There was a nice article in the Dearborn Pressing Guide last week, who would read the paper these days?
Well, nobody, that's what I'm saying, it seems like nobody's.
Was that a report you wanted, or more, or something?
It's like an update.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It doesn't have to be.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a full.
Okay.
We did, we are going in special ed, so we are adding actually five special education classes.
Well, that would be a nice thing to let the, the parents know of what the changes are going to be.
Okay, great, thank you. Good. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Wednesday, August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, P twelve Board Training, six P M. at the Administrative Service Center in Room Twelve. Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, H F C Board of Trustees Meeting, seven P M. at the Administrative Service and Conference Center in the Rosen Hall Board Room.
So that training is in two days, do we know how long that's going to last, about?
It's about three hours.
Three hours? Gee, thanks, Jim. Sixty-nine. Okay, great, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.